Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the commissioners' meeting for Thursday, December 19th, 2024, at the time being 1:03 a.m. Would you please join me in a moment of silent prayer? If you'd please join and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America, with its standing ovation, one nation, united, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Executive session announcements.
Yes, we had two executive session announcements. One of those was on the 13th with the HR Director, all three commissioners, HR Analyst, Finance Director. And regarding one opposition, the second one was held this morning at approximately 11:00 a.m. regarding what the three commissioners, HR Director, HR Analyst, Finance Director, regarding personnel.
I think we also have to announce the interviews. So there was Monday, the 16th, there was an executive session that was for a vacant position, which was the Commissioners, HR Director, Chief Clerk, and Assistant. And then the same on Tuesday at 9:17.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Commissioners' meetings for 12:03, 24. May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Public comment? We always look at K.
Just on that, on that, today's executive session meeting, you can't just say personnel. It's got to be a little bit more specific. There is what, there was a court case that basically kind of spelled it out. You know, because, because whether it's, if it's one specific person, that's...
It was one open position.
Okay, thank you. Yes, it does. As opposed to a group of people that you might be dealing with, personnel.
So that, then that led into the interviews on the 12/16 and 12/17.
All right, that's fine.
Thank you for clarifying, though.
And then my other comment is, I was interested, when you get through the agenda on the opioid settlement advisory committee, I was wondering if they recommended more than three, and you could cover that whenever you deal with that as a committee, have additional recommendations. And when you get to the Commissioners portion of the agenda, I'm looking for some explanation on the, on the ARCA funds and why they're not being used for the wireless towers down Williamsburg and Juniad and Townsley, which they celebrated like crazy whenever you announced that. And then on six, and then Measure Six, I was wondering if there was a problem, if that was correct. It says for the remainder of the 2025 calendar year, rates are going to be as follows. And it's like, oh, but I thought you just said for the 2025 calendar year, the rates, it was not to exceed $200,000. So whenever you get to that, you can, you can just sort, just sort it out for me. I just need, need a little more explanation.
Any other public comments?
I also have some questions. I'll do a quick one. Thank you.
The time to ask questions is right now, because this is a public comment. You won't be able to, and so if you would like to, now's the time.
Can you tell us why there is nobody on that committee? How you decided to do something, and why is there nobody on that committee that has lived experience from losing somebody? And maybe somebody who's lived experience that suffered from the opioid exposure. How did that come about? And why isn't the committee themselves allowed to submit for things for their agencies or their own project?
Is that all the questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two questions, yeah. Because after all, I have definitely advocated for two years, and I'd like to know, along with many other parents, why there's nobody on that committee that has anything to do with this. I'm lost out.
Okay. Any further public comment? Okay, thank you. Commissioners' comments.
Last week, when we had our public meeting, we were all, I believe, unaware of the passing of Representative Jerry Stern. So I did want to comment today that our, our thoughts and prayers go out to his family. He was a tremendous public servant for this area. I can remember when I came here about 20 years ago, I was randomly selected to go to a breakfast with Representative Stern. And from that point forward, if he saw me on the street, he would cross the street, call me by name, and to say hello and ask how things were going. So he was just a tremendous person in this community and served our community very well over the years. So we are very sad to, to lose him.
Is that a comment?
Yes, thank you.
Yes?
I forgot about Jerry, too. Well, today being Thursday, the, whatever it is, 19th, we have a big upcoming event. Next week is Christmas. So I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I hope you all have the opportunity to enjoy your families, to relax some. We've had kind of a wild week here at the county, and to reflect on all of the great gifts that God has given to us. Thank you.
Can you run us through the consent agenda?
Yep. Resolution 571-2024 are the payments on the warrant lists of items A and B, the ratification of total payroll of the paycheck dated 12/13/2024 in the amount of $847,568.32 in item C. Items D, WTAJ requested approval for the use of the courthouse, courtyard for the coverage of the event that was held today. Item E, we wanted to make a verbal correction on that. It's requesting the approval for the reappointment of Commissioner Representative Amy Webster to the Board for the period of 1/125 to 12/31/25. It's items F, G, H, and I.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. May I have a second?
Second?
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
I'm an aye with an extension to the payment to Holidaysburg Borough.
Thank you. Staff reports and special business. Opioid Settlement Advisory Committee. Well, you're not the whole committee, but you're the spokesperson. Thank you, Tricia.
Just, good afternoon. There's just two of us here today representing. I am here requesting approval of an allocation of funds from the Opioid Settlement Fund to the Department of Social Services for reimbursement of expenses incurred for the 2024 SAP Networking Day in the amount of $5,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the allocation of funds from the Opioid Settlement Fund to the Department of Social Services for the amount listed in 2024, the SAP Networking System. May I have a second?
Second?
What, can you explain what SAP is?
Sure. The Student Assistance Program is a mandated program that all of our schools, K to 12, have in the county. It's actually state mandated across the state. SAP Networking Day is where we pull, we pulled this year over 100 student of assistance, professionals, teachers, counselors, providers together, and we had a day worth of training.
And specifically on what?
Training, the afternoon, was on the One Pill Can Kill campaign, which is specific to the opioid epidemic and the fentanyl epidemic and the availability of counterfeit pills.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Next, I'm requesting approval of a purchase of service agreement between the County of Blair, Blair Health Choices, and Blair Health Choices for contingency management services in the amount of $524,560.84 to be paid from the opioid settlement fund.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of service agreement between the County of Blair and Health Choices of contingency management services in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second?
Again, sorry, Tricia, but could you give an overview of what the Health Choices and contingency managed services are for those who do not know?
Sure. Let me get my paper here. So contingency management services are a evidence-based program of behavioral therapy to increase commitment to treatment.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
I actually have to abstain, because I am on the Blair Health Choices Board.
Okay, so we have one extension.
Okay, all right. And I am also requesting approval of a purchase of service agreement between the County of Blair, Blair, and Blair Drug and Alcohol Program, Inc., for implementation of community reinforcement and family training, the CRAFT program, in the amount of $8,000 to be paid for, paid for from the opioid settlement fund.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of service agreement between the County of Blair and the Blair Drug and Alcohol Program in the amount listed from the opioid settlement fund. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Can you please go over what CRAFT stands for?
Sure. CRAFT stands for Community Reinforcement and Family Training. It is a compassionate and non-confrontational, evidence-based intervention, and its three main goals are to reduce the affected loved one's harmful substance misuse, engage the loved one into treatment, and to improve the family member and loved one's family functioning.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
I have to abstain, because I'm the Commissioner Representative on Blair DIP.
So we have two yeas and one extension.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Taylor, Public Safety. Good afternoon.
I have two items, with 911 and one with EMA this morning. Requesting approval to cancel the 30-day open burning ban for the County of Blair with the minimum notice of 48 hours to be given prior to the cancellation. I think we all agree that it's time to stop that one.
I'll make a motion to approve to cancel the 30-day open burning ban in the County of Blair. May I have a second?
Second?
The only question I have, Mark, and you were on vacation, so we received, Commissioners' officers received complaints, people were still burning. We have no authority to do anything with it. So is this just a, you know...
Really, it's up to the municipalities to enforce it.
They call the county, we call the municipality and tell them, hey, this is going on, or should people who are calling us, should we direct them to call the municipality they live in? Because...
That's what I did through all of those, was direct them to the municipality, their EMA person, and then they can take it up with their counselors.
Because it's kind of frustrating for, at least for me, to get those phone calls and find there's nothing really we can do to do to enforce.
Enforcement has to be through local police with the approval of their municipalities, to the best of my knowledge.
So when this is done in the, in the future, if we do implement one countywide, then the individuals should call the local municipalities or police departments for enforcement.
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
Second item is requesting approval of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the PIMA Statewide Interconnectivity Funding Grant in the total amount of $1,682,506.42. They approved all the maintenance projects. You want them read out separately?
No, not necessarily.
The biggest surprise, and the one we're most grateful for, is they did award the SEC Regional Radio Grant. As I had spoke to the Commissioners before, that was going to be a, a big project that we had come, upcoming. This is going to be a big help. And the other surprise is they gave us funding to develop the regional cybersecurity plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Emergency Management, PIMA Statewide Interconnectivity Funding Grant Agreement for the amount listed on the agenda for the amounts, for the amounts in the areas listed. May I have a second? Sorry.
Second?
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? All right, thank you.
Final item is requesting approval of the 2023-2025 HMEP Grant Amendment to include, this is year three that we're talking about, approved projects, in the total award amount of $12,760 for the performance period of October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025. Year three will be for our peak hazardous material software and for our community, or community flow study.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2325 Hazardous Material Emergency Preparedness Grant to include year three, 2025, with the amount listed through, from October 1st, 2024, through and including September 30th, 2025. May I have a second?
Second?
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Social services. Tricia, again, double duty today, huh?
I am requesting approval of four sub-recipient agreements for housing assistance under the county's PA Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fair Program for 2324 between the County of Blair and the following agencies: Catholic Charities, the Center for Community Action Agency, Blair Health Choices, and Family Services, Inc., all in the amount of $10,000 each.
I'll make a motion to approve the four sub-recipient agreements for housing assistance under the Fair Program for 2324 for the charities or the, those identified on here with the amounts listed. May I have a second?
Second?
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Next, I am requesting approval for the submission of the calendar year 2025 Annual Notification Form for Assisted Outpatient Treatment to the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, indicating that the County of Blair will not provide assisted outpatient treatment pursuant to Section 301(c) of the Mental Health Procedures Act, and for myself to sign the form on behalf of the county.
So I'll make a motion to approve for the submission of the 2025 Annual Notification Form for Assisted Outpatient Treatment, that the County of Blair will not provide assisted outpatient treatment pursuant to what's listed. May I have a second?
Second?
Just one question. Can you explain why we're not?
We are not currently providing assisted outpatient treatment due to capacity issues, capacity in the county and in the judicial court system. It is a, basically another problem-solving court. We have, however, started looking into what it will take to build that capacity so that we can provide it in the future.
And you may not be able to answer this question, so if you can, I understand that. But do you see this as being an impact on the county because of not providing the service?
I do not. There are very limited counties in Pennsylvania that actually provide assisted outpatient treatment. We manage our capacity as we can right now. However, we do, as I said, noted, it could be a benefit in the future. We're just not ready. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I know you said that there's a limited number of counties who do, but do you know, like, how, my understanding is not very many at all do this themselves.
My understanding is, there's either one or two in the southeast, and Allegheny County is making inroads to come onboard with it. And that's it.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Last one. Requesting approval of the fiscal year 2425 Contract Agreement between the County of Blair and San Clear Child Services for mental health services funded by the Human Services Block Grant for the amount not to exceed $28,000 for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the County of Blair and San Clear Child Services for mental health services funded by a Human Services Block Grant in the amount listed for, from July 1st, 2024 through and including June 30th, 2025. May I have a second?
Second?
Seconds are hard to come by. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
Hi there.
And then...
I am requesting approval for the payment of invoice made outside the county purchasing policy received from CO File for the preservation of three of my docket books that are in need of repair in the total amount of $12,561. The first half in the amount of $6,280.50 is to be paid out of the Records Improvement Committee Fund, and the second half, once the books are repaired, will be paid out of my reserve fund, so there's no cost to the county.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract agreement between the County of Blair and, oops, I'm sorry, between, outside the purchasing policy for CO File for the preservation of three pathognitary docket books for the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second?
Any comments or questions? Again, I know that you said this, but I wanted to be clear, the funding of this is all coming out of funds that are not associated with the general fund, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and the Records Improvement already approved it on November 6th, so that first payment will go out soon as I get this approved.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Highway.
Let's see, Paul. Did you want me to take that?
Sure.
Sure. Requesting, the Public Works Highway Department is requesting approval of current construction plans, bid specs, and the advertisement for the invitation to build, bid, excuse me, for the salt storage building for the Highway Department.
So I'll make a motion to approve the construction plans, bid specification, and advertisement for the invitation to bid salt storage building at the Highway Department. May I have a second?
I will happily second this. We've been talking about this for several years.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, number two.
Requesting approval for the 2025 Annual Lakemont Dam Inspection Report to be performed by Glenn Dobson Foreman Engineers, Inc.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 Annual Lakemont Dam Inspection Report. May I have a second?
Second?
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? The people downstream are happy. Go ahead.
Requesting approval for the payment of the invoices made outside of the county purchasing policy received from Robert's Pest Control for treatment for flea control in the amount of $325.
I'll approve, make a motion to approve the payment for invoices to pay Robert's Pest Control treatment for flea control in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second?
Any comments or questions?
We don't have fleas in the courthouse, don't worry.
We could have fleas.
We don't anymore.
Hence the contract.
Right. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? All right, human resources.
I am requesting approval for the submission of the 2024 PCOMP Safety Improvement Grant Application to the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania in the total amount of $3,854.25 as outlined below. Did you want me to read all of that?
I don't think it's necessary. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 PCOMP Safety Improvement Grant in the amount listed for the items listed in the agenda. May I have a second?
Second?
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you. GIS.
Good afternoon. I'm here to request approval of the quote received from ESRI Environmental Systems Research Institute for GIS Software Maintenance in the total amount of $27,160. This is for the period of February 1st, 2025 through January 31st, 2026.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote received from the Environmental Systems Research Institute for the software maintenance in the amount listed for the period of February 1st, 2025 through and including January 1st, 2026. May I have a second?
Second?
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you. CYF.
Hello. We're requesting approval of the fiscal year 2425 Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth and Families, and EV Black Attorneys, LLC for the period of July 1st, 24 through June 30th, 25, at the hourly rate of $135 per hour.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2425 Agreement between the County of Blair and EV Black Attorneys, LLC for the period of July 1st, 2024 through and including June 30th, 2025, the hourly rate listed. May I have a second?
I'll second for the sake of discussion, but I think we actually need to table this till the 31st.
Okay.
So I don't know that I actually need a second. But, so there is one requested change. It was actually requested on our end, that we have not had the opportunity to fully review. So we do anticipate that in one form or another, it should be voted on, on the 31st, but the, we haven't had a chance to fully look at it yet, so, sorry.
It's all right. So we'll, we'll table this until the next Commissioners' meeting for further discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Human resources.
I am requesting approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between County of Blair and the Pennsylvania County's Health Insurance Cooperative to set aside $576,598 of our current reserves for the purpose of funding 90% of our maximum premium rate for participation in the P-Chip funding model for projected costs for our self-insured medical plan for 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the County of Blair and Pennsylvania County's Health Insurance Cooperative, P-Chip, in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second?
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
I'm also requesting approval of a one-year renewal of the Administrative Services Agreement between the County and Luminaire Health Benefits for Claims Administration effective January 1st, 2025, in the total amount of $260,750.16.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-year renewal of the Administrative Services Agreement between the County of Blair and Luminaire Health Benefits for the period of January 1, 2025 until when?
December 31st of 2025.
December 31st, 2025. Thank you. In the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second?
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Requesting approval of the Operation Our Town Agreement between the County of Blair, the Blair County District Attorney, and Operation Our Town for donated funds to conduct law enforcement purposes as set forth in this agreement, and gives the Blair County District Attorney all necessary cooperation to facilitate said purposes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Operation Our Town Agreement between the County of Blair and the Blair County District Attorney's Office for donated funds for conducting law enforcement purposes. May I have a second?
Second?
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
We have one opposition. All right, okay.
Item two, requesting approval to rescind Resolution 98-2024... Item two, requesting approval to rescind Resolution 98-2024, approving the commitment of $200,000 of American Rescue Plan money, or ARPA funds, to the UPMC Foundation contingent as outlined in this resolution.
Make a motion to approve the, to rescind Resolution 98-2024 for the commitment of $200,000 of the American Rescue Plan to the UPMC Foundation contingent as outlined in this resolution. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Number three.
Item three, requesting approval to allocate $200,000 to the UPMC Altoona Foundation from capital reserve funds towards construction of the Emergency Psychiatric Assessment Treatment and Healing Unit, or EMPATH, at UPMC Altoona Hospital. These funds are contingent upon the UPMC's receipt of $773,015 from Pennsylvania Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs for Substance Abuse Disorder and Crisis Stabilization Service Agreement, pardon me, Service Grant, $250,000 from the US Department of Health Resources and Services Administration, and an allocation of $100,000 from the City of Altoona towards the construction of this unit.
I'll make a motion to approve the allocation of $200,000 to the UPMC Altoona EMPATH Unit as listed in the agreement, this document, I should say. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right.
Next item is requesting approval to rescind Resolution Number 373-2023, approving of ARPA funds to be distributed to ABI for the deployment of fiber and wireless towers in the Williamsburg and Juniata Township project area within Blair County.
I'll make a motion to approve, to rescind the Resolution 373-2023, approving ARPA funds to be distributed to ABI for the development of fiber and wireless towers in the Williamsburg and Juniata Township project area within Blair County. May I have a second?
Second.
And do you know why we're withdrawing these funds? Go ahead.
Yes, that's actually the next item.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay.
Okay, item five is requesting approval to allocate $250,000 to Allegheny Broadband, Inc., in capital reserve funds contingent upon Allegheny's broadband receipt of $2 million from the Pennsylvania Broadband Development Authority in response to the Capital Projects Fund's opportunity for grant funding, $250,000 from Crow's Nest Broadband, LLC, and an allocation of $250,000 from the County of Blair for the purpose of deploying fiber and wireless towers to over 593 locations in the Williamsburg area in Juniata Township within Blair County.
I'll make a motion to approve the allocation of $250,000 to the Allegheny's Broadband, Incorporated, in the funds listed below. May I have a second?
Second.
So we, you hear we pulled money, but it was out of ARPA. We're actually putting that money, investing it right back, so we're not taking any money out. Our commitment is still there. It's just reap, reappraisal, I guess. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay.
The next item is requesting approval for the fee agreement letter between the County of Blair and Gabriel Farah, PC, for the solicitor service in a not-to-exceed amount of $200,000 plus out-of-pocket expenses, and for the 2025 calendar year. For the remainder of the 2025 calendar year, the rates are as follows: Partner rate is 225, Senior Associate's rate is 210, Associate rate is 190, and Paralegal rate is 145.
Make a motion to approve the fee agreement letter between the County of Blair and Gabriel Farah for solicitor service not to exceed $200,000 at the rates listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? So the rates for, the rates did not change. The rates are the same rates of what they were in the initial time, but we listed them, so you know what they are, but they're the same as what they were last year or this year. Okay? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Before we go into old business, although we certainly don't have to, I do want to respond to a question that was posed earlier on the opioid settlement. A couple things, and I would preference this by starting out by saying that the money that Blair County gets as well as other counties for this is a lot, is a lot of money. So we've looked at trying to figure out what is the best way to distribute this money for, for its intended purposes. We knew going into this that we would never be able to satisfy everybody, and everyone has an opinion of where this money should be spent, how it should be spent. We felt it was best to put together a committee, and that committee advises the Commissioners on what they believe to be the best use of this, of these monies. So that committee was established. We approved that committee, and that committee has and will continue to bring to us ideas and how this money should be spent for its intended uses, and there are guidelines, specific guidelines, that this money can be used for. So I would just like to say that we're doing our due diligence and trying to spread this money out equitably and for the purposes of trying to prevent this horrible disease and trying to prevent the tragedies that have, has already occurred. You know, we can't bring those people back, as sad as it is. We can apologize all day, although we shouldn't have to because it wasn't our issue, but we're trying to use these funds appropriately to stop this and stop other people from having this tragic outcome. So that's, I don't know if anyone else wants to comment or not. Okay, hearing none. There is no old business. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held Tuesday, December 31st, at 1:00 p.m. Thank you.